Good morning and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners meeting this July 12, 2022. I'm pleased that we have Reverend Joseph Wamatitu here with us this morning. He's with Bethesda Empowerment International Church. He will be providing our invocation, which will be followed by the pledge. That will be brought by firefighter Victoria Van Dyke. For those of you willing and able, please stand and Reverend, please go for you to join us.
Let us pray. Almighty God, the Creator of heaven and earth, the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, we thank you for this day that you have given the Board of Commissioners to come and deliberate on issues that pertain to this county and its residents. Father, you are the author of our wisdom. We pray that you will guide and direct the meeting today. We pray the wisdom that comes from above. We pray for understanding. We pray for the peace to keep our hearts, our minds as individual commissioners and the members of the public who are going to be participating today. Father, we desire that this meeting will be fruitful for the benefit of the residents. We commit all things into your hands and we trust you for a fruitful meeting full of the wisdom from above and the harmony that comes from you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Reverend and firefighter Van Dyke. With that, this meeting is called to order. This morning, we have three public hearings before us. The first public hearing will be brought by our Department of Transportation and is to conduct a public hearing with respect to the request for proposals for the operations, maintenance, and administrative support services for Cobb Link, a service of the Transit Division.
Good morning, Drew Ressler, Cobb DOT. We have one public hearing this morning. On February 28, 2017, the Board approved a five-year contract with First Transit for operations, maintenance, and administrative support services for Cobb Link. Subsequently, on May 10, 2022, the Board authorized an extension for a one-year renewal option for those same services. The Department recommends going out to bid for a new contract for these services. Therefore, the Department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing regarding the request for proposals for the operations, maintenance, and administrative support services for Cobb Link, a service of the Transit Division.
Thank you. With that, we'll have a public hearing. And for those of you who are not familiar with our public hearing policies, anyone can come up and address this item and this item only for a maximum of three minutes, and we'll take an unlimited number of speakers. With that, I declare the public hearing open.
Hello, my name is Matt Stegall. I'm an appointee on the Cobb County Transit Advisory Board, but I'm here today representing myself and not the Board. Just want to be clear with that. At issue today is a RFP that has not been released publicly yet. So we're kind of running blind as far as what's in that RFP, but I'll keep my comments grounded in my experience as a Board member of the TAB for about the past year. In my experience managing operations, there are two critical elements for success. One is clearly defined goals and metrics, and number two is accurate and available data to ensure that the Department is achieving its operational goals. Unfortunately, my experience this year on the Transit Advisory Board is that the current operations with the current provider are lacking in those two critical areas. Ridership data is opaque and incorrect. Basic questions about staffing and operational impacts go unanswered often, and I'm envious of the data and insight that is often provided when MARTA shares their quarterly reports. Things need to change if we want to expand and grow transit successfully in the future. I'm hopeful that this new RFP allows us as a county to enter into a partnership where operational goals and objectives are clearly defined and the data and analysis to ensure the transparency and oversight is required. An RFP which includes this, combined with the Department that has the resources and leadership to hold a chosen third-party accountable, will provide a foundation for future growth and investment in transit in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to participate in this specific public hearing with respect to Cobb Link? With that, I declare this public hearing closed. Drew, if you don't mind, can you approach just a question? Well, Commissioner Braw, I do have a question with respect to what the citizens stated. They stated a couple of things that the RFP hasn't been released.
It has not yet. This is just the legal requirement that we hold a public hearing on requesting services for a new transit provider. We had a new Transit Division Manager start yesterday. So we're 90% complete with that RFP. Would like to have him review that before we share it with the Board, share it with TAB and the overall public. So we're hoping to do that within the next couple of weeks. And then it would be advertised for the prescribed amount of time for purchasing policies.
Okay, very good. Then there's still opportunity to modify what may have been considered for that RFP.
There is.
Okay. I know we've discussed this, but the gentleman from TAB stated that there was a desire to have some oversight or additional oversight in the transit provider because data wasn't being provided regularly or as requested. Is that going to be incorporated or can that be incorporated in this new proposal?
So our intermodal deputy director has spent a significant amount of time with the transit staff and TAB to identify where the deficiencies currently are in terms of reporting and accountability. Many of those have been incorporated into the draft RFP document thus far. And then once the new Transit Division Manager has a chance to review that, then we'll be able to issue that and share it more publicly. And then the other piece that we will request of our new division manager, and his name is Thea Letman, will be to incorporate more clearly defined performance measures and targets that we can track our progress on.
Okay. Thank you, Drew. There's been an observation made, and Commissioner Braw can bring that to your attention.
Yeah, I did not see this before yesterday's meeting, but on page seven, the notice of public hearing, it says notice is hereby given July 12 at 7:00 PM. And that should be 9:00 AM. Is that, or maybe legal can tell us if we have to re-advertise or what's... I just saw this.
We can confer with purchasing and follow-up if it needs to be re-advertised.
Yes, we'd ask that you please do that.
Of course.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate you.
I'm sorry, Drew.
No, that's...
No.
Thank you.
It has to be advertised properly.
Of course.
With the right time.
And better find that out earlier on than for us to be further down the road and have to come back and do this over again.
Absolutely, thank you. We will confer with legal and purchasing on the appropriate next steps.
It may be a typo in our book, but we need to see what the original...
I've got it on mine as well. We'll double-check what the advertisement said in the MDJ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Yes, Commissioner.
Drew, there was also a statement made about the lack of ridership data. Do you know when that will be available?
We have ridership data. The challenge is having it easily understood by the general public because it comes in so many different formats. So we're glad to share what we have on ridership data.
And has that been shared with the TAB members and explained as to how you are to read that so they can help educate the constituents?
It has been, but we'll review that again with TAB.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
With that, we're moving on to our second public hearing. And this is to conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year '23 proposed budget.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager, Deputy County Manager. We are going to be conducting our first public hearing on the 2023 proposed budget, but before we open the public hearing, I just wanted to review some key dates and some information with the Board. On, excuse me, June 28, at 1:30, we presented the budget at the work session. And then on this meeting, July 12, will be our first public hearing. But in between that, we had on June 30, the budget was advertised in the MDJ. And then on July 26, at 7:00 PM, will be the adoption of the 2023 proposed budget. We went through a lengthy presentation at the work session. All those materials have been posted to the county's website. They're available in the Finance Department for the public consumption as well as in the back of the room as well as the courthouse. These are the documents that we provided at work session and again are available at all of these locations. What we wanted to do with the Board is if there's been any modifications from what was originally presented, we'd share that with the Board at any of these meetings. Currently, there has been no modifications from what was originally presented. So this information is still accurate and up to date. And then with that, if the Board has any questions or comments before we open the public hearing, I would like, please, give you the opportunity at this time.
Commissioners, would you like to ask Drew any questions or provide any comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sure, Bill. We don't have the July 19 special call meeting at 6:30 on that list.
That is correct. So the July 19 special call meeting is simply for the millage. So the millage requires more public hearings than the budget. So that will be covered in the next public hearing for the budget, and we'll definitely identify that key date.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, with that, those of you who are here would like to participate in this public hearing similar to the last public hearing. An unlimited number of speakers may address the Board with respect to the budget and the budget only. And each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to provide remarks. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open.
My name's Craig Harwood. Got here a little late, but if this is about the budget...
Yes.
The... We have like a 30% anomaly in house new home sales, you know, the recent sales of the houses. It's a bubble. And Cobb County, I was reading the article yesterday, is listed in the top 11 bowl... Well, it's actually Georgia. There's 11 states that are the worst for the bubble, and we're in it. And so I know you got a budget. I know you got a millage rate. I know you think you have money to spend, but it's a false amount of money that you have. And I really suggest you look hard at rolling the millage rate back, you know, because it's not going to be there if you go on. If you hire more people, then what are you going to do when the house values go down? And it's time for real caution because we've seen it before. And I can't believe it happened this fast again in my lifetime. I just can't believe it. After 2008, and I was in here talking to the previous boards, and I think when Mr. Olins was the chairman, and I was telling them, "You're out." It was coming. And, you know, they made a big deal out of it. You know, they had seedy collateralized debt obligations back then. This time, we have CLOs. They just renamed it. They still do it on Wall Street. And the Mark Spain phenomenon, you know, it's... Cox Enterprises owns 97.1, and it's like, oh, this is the Mark Spain channel. And basically, he says, "Well, buy your house. They'll pay more than they're really worth." And then he turned them over. I was looking it all up, and it was like, who's financing Mark Spain to do this? He hands them off to Open Door. Open Door, it turns out, large stakeholder, their stock is BlackRock. And, you know, it's this big monolith. But the part that nobody's reporting is Georgia Fund One. And I'm running out of time, so I'll have to finish this later. But we're actually in this Ponzi scheme by where we put our money in the state of Georgia. Time's out.
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Chair. My name is Debbie Fisher from East Cobb. I'm here representing myself and no group. I spoke two weeks ago about the budget that was presented in the work session. I'm sure by now you all have received my email from yesterday. I understand your need for money to fund capital projects, to fund services like my three-foot grass that hasn't been mowed on our right-of-way. I understand all that. What I don't understand, we have over a 12% increase in digest. That's 12% right off the start. Every expectation from the taxpayers in 2017, when we voted for a parks bond, was that it would retire in this budget year. Instead, you're moving it to the fire fund, which also has a 12.3% increase in their expected revenue. Every taxpayer out there who pays attention, from 2008, when we voted in $40 million for parks money that was spent on a baseball park, expected this to retire. It was retired and moved into the general fund. The millage for parks bond went to zero. Mike Boyce brought it back, .13 for half the money. Again, it was to retire in 2023 and go to zero. That doesn't mean you can move it to the fire fund and not declare an increase. That is an increase. Now, if you did the same thing that Tim Lee did, you would move it to the general fund, and we would be paying only the amount on our homestead exemption. Instead, we're paying the full amount with it going to the fire fund when it should be zero. That's all I have to say. And I'm familiar with the whole process and rollback. I appreciate the response from Mr. Volkman and Commissioner Burrell. I'm very familiar. I've been talking about the budget for eight years. I'm familiar. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gary Henderson. I live in East Cobb, and I'm here to speak my concerns about the budget, the large increases that's proposed in starting salaries. And my reasoning is this, a recession is coming. The proposed $17 an hour starting pay is fighting last year's pay issues when you couldn't find people to work and not the coming year's issues, which is going to be a recession. And I'll give you a couple of examples of how industry is looking at this. Last year, Fieldale, which has a very labor-intensive operation, very tough working conditions, they were offering $22 an hour starting pay for the night shift. This year, it's $17 an hour. So it's gone down $5 an hour in a year and continues to go down. Another situation is a distribution warehouse, 2 million square feet, full of merchandise, they can't get out the door. 500 trailers parked on the lot full of merchandise, they can't get unloaded. And the reason is they don't have employees. Why don't they have employees? They won't pay the wages for what is being, what people are sort of used to right now because they know the wages are going down next year and they don't want to have to reduce wages for their employees. It's, you know, you're kind of fighting a double battle. You've got inflationary pressures right now, but there's going to be recession next year. Now, I'll give you a personal example of what happened in this kind of environment 45 years ago that I personally experienced. My employer, due to inflationary pressures, raised the starting pay levels on all jobs by 10%, but they didn't raise any pay for any individuals or any groups of individuals. I'd only been on my job about two years and found myself suddenly working for less than the minimum. We were an expanding group. They brought in a new person. He came in off the street with no experience, and voila, he made the minimum. He was making more money than I made. So what did I do? I found me another job, and I told my boss, I said, "Now you have two people to train, the new guy and my replacement," because it left a really bad taste in my mouth. It was a slap in the face, an insult. I never forgot it, and I don't want you to do that to your employees that are already working here in Cobb County. So what do we do? You're not going to give a 48% increase to every employee, which is what the starting pay increase is looking at. That doesn't work. And the starting pay increases would be $11,000 a year. You're not going to give every employee another $11,000 a year. The budget won't stand that either. So here's what I propose for you. A dollar an hour increase would be $2,000 a year.
Mr. Henderson, I'm sorry, your time's up. Three-minute drop.
Good morning. My name is Pamela Riordan. I'm not speaking for any group. I'm speaking for myself as a concerned citizen, a person who's been in real estate a long time, a person who's taken finance, economics, and I pay attention. Folks, I have to disagree with Gary. We are in a recession because the indicators such as the number of repos, which are repossession on cars, are dramatically increasing. That is always a leading indicator. We are two-quarters negative growth. That is, by definition, a recession. We are in a recession. That does not mean you increase merit pays for everybody because, like Gary said, that is the phenomenon that will happen. People will just quit. You have a problem keeping people now and getting people? That is going to exacerbate the problem. You do not do that because it's not a merit increase. It is a cola. It's not a merit increase. You just don't do that. And on the other side, for the revenue, you are going to break the backs of people because they have not sold their homes. They do not have that money. It is an unrealized capital gain. And there is a huge, big difference. You're playing with phony money. You're saying, "Oh, well, because of this and because of that, these people have houses that are worth this much, so they could pay more in property taxes." This is insane because after the recession, we are in it now. There's going to be a market crash. I could tell you to the day, now six weeks, five weeks ago, where the market turned, the real estate market turned. The prices are already going down. So I really want you to take a look at this and be serious because this is a situation that isn't going to change until we get somebody else in Washington that wants to do something about it and is serious about doing something about it and open up energy again because our economy, no matter how you want to be... I mean, I'm for green. I have a hybrid car. I'm never going to buy an electric car because there are too many problems. And, you know, I don't know why people are so pushing getting rid of oil. Like, just look around. Look at the hospitals. Everything is made out of plastic. We have plastic everything, and that's from oil. We're all wearing rayon, nylon, some polyester. That is from oil. Why are we doing this? And the people in Washington are not smart. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairwomen. I agree with most what everything has been said, especially by Debbie Fisher, by Pam Riordan. And they're very analytical. They're working with the numbers on a regular basis. And I look at, like, just commonsense-wise what's happening. When you look at what the price of gas is, when you look at what the price of groceries are, and it's impacting us, and I think, holy crap. Sorry for my language. How is it impacting a single parent? How is it impacting anybody at this point? Somebody that's on assistance? It's impacting all of us. And my concern is that when you're looking at this budget and that you're not taking the whole picture into account. And if you take the whole picture into account, it's also going to look at, okay, what's absolutely happening around us? What's happening in our country? When we have, what, now it's another $40 billion to Ukraine, but parents, moms, kids can't get formula? And so we're looking at things that are Third World country kind of issues, like we've running out of fuel. And it is going to catch up with us. So there is a tsunami, whether or not you want to recognize it. I see you making decisions that, you know, sound like really cool and woke and all that cool stuff and probably getting a lot of, I would imagine, pressure from, again, the IRC, probably the DNC, I'm sorry, the DNC, on how to do this. But when you have people that bought a house thinking, "Okay, I bought a house for $200,000. I'm going..." and they know what their expenses are, and now with inflation and with the, excuse me, the market going up, they can't even stay in their own houses because they don't have the money for the taxes. What's going to happen there? Cobb County is going to have a real tsunami of a problem. So this is the time to be prudent and maybe take a step back. So this is the time to be prudent and maybe take a step back, maybe say, "Hey, we wanted to do this, but we're going to be imploding, so to make sure that we reduce the hardship for our constituents that pay for your salaries and pay for all of Cobb County, let's think about them." Okay? Thanks.
Are there any additional speakers?
I'm Matt Segal. I've been living in this county for over 30 years and I just want to express my support in this budget for providing county staff with raises in the living wage. For one, the county has a shortage of staff in many of its departments. This is causing an impact to the quality of life in some areas of the county and is forcing us to outsource basic work to contractors. I know, I also know that the county struggles to compete with the private sector for talented workers, leaving many departments short-staffed and overly dependent on just a few individuals. Beyond improving the operations of the county, it's simply the right thing to do for many of our staff. By increasing the pay to become closer to a living wage, we allow our staff to remain members of our community and live and raise their families in our community. Looking at positions added, I appreciate the county investing in additional staff for senior services, parks, and libraries, but I must share my complaint at the lack of positions focused on sustainability. It is past time that the county brings in a senior-level leader focused on sustainable policies and practices, especially in transportation. Whether it's drawing down our CO2 emissions, reducing our vehicles' miles traveled, or reducing our waste, energy, and water usage, we need to set goals to achieve as a community. I go back to the quote I shared at the last meeting that we shouldn't look at our vision but our budget to determine our priorities. And it's very clear how much we need to change to ensure that our county is enjoyed for generations to come. Thank you.
Are there any additional speakers? This public hearing is closed. Bill, can you approach, please? Commissioners, do you have any additional comments with respect to the public hearing we just heard? Go ahead, Commissioner Richardson.
There was something mentioned about the merit pay being akin to a COLA. And while a COLA is certainly an industry, something that should be implemented as a principle for organizations, how is our merit pay unique or similar to a COLA?
So our merit pay is, in fact, a merit pay. It's based on your annual performance reviews. You have to have a meets and exceeds to warrant a merit pay. So it does go through a rating process and criteria in order to be eligible to receive it.
And from what I understood, it was a 3% budgeted, which meant some employees may get 3-plus percent and some will get less than 3%.
So we actually, it was 3.5% is what we budgeted yet, but you're exactly correct. There, the county manager and HR are working through the process of distinguishing between maybe an exceeds versus a meets, and then anything below a meets would be zero.
Okay, thank you. And there was also a concern about what happens to employees that have been here for a significant amount of time. We refer to that on the board as compression.
Yes.
Is that something, that is something that we targeted as a part of this?
Yes, so...
Rollout? It's expensive, but that's the goal.
Yes, Commissioner, so the board is actually addressing that in two different ways. One, for our public safety, this is our second year of the compression adjustments as related to our step-in grade, so that is being addressed on that side. The class and pay study does look at tenure and years of service as far as where you're placed based on the adjustment of the minimum pay, so it does take that into account.
Thank you. I love my clarifying questions.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Bill, it was commented about this Georgia Fund I.
Yes.
Can you please enlighten us on that?
I'm going to let my Treasury expert buddy talk about that because he knows way more about that than I do, so I'm going to let him answer those questions.
Treasury head. A little earlier than anticipated, but good morning. So Georgia Fund I is the vehicle run by the Georgia State Treasury Office. It is a collateralized pool of investments mainly in agency securities and U.S. government securities. It's a money market fund that all municipalities within the state of Georgia can invest in. And right now, we have investments in our money market. It's where we host our operating cash that's not invested in agency securities and also not in our daily operating cash accounts. So we invest in Georgia Fund I. It is a proper investment for those funds.
And do you know roughly how much that will be for this upcoming budget?
We don't actually have a budget line for investments. It's on an as-needed basis. So in the fall, when cash flows are high from the receipt of tax revenues, that can get anywhere up to 200 to 300 million. However, we draw those down through the course of the year as we have operational expenditures and it can get as low as 60 to 70 million dollars. And in fact, that's one of the main reasons in prior years that we've had to borrow a TAN. So we watch our operating cash as it, as we spend it throughout the year and we forecast low points. This year, we were fortunate enough to not need to borrow a TAN. We had enough operating cash. So it ebbs and flows. It can get as high as a few hundred million dollars based on tax receipts, but then it can get as low as 50, 60 million dollars in one of our accounts for, and I'm going to limit the conversation here to our operating cash accounts. We also have our SPOS Georgia Fund I investment. So as SPOS receipts are collected, the State Department of Revenue puts those monthly receipts into our Georgia Fund I account. We then in turn invest in securities of the United States government or it's held in Georgia Fund I.
Are there any other comments or questions for Bill? All right, thank you. Bill, and Buddy, you are not one. Excuse me, Buddy, I know you're...
We are one.
Thank you. Amen, in finance. Okay, we can move on to our next public hearing.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, I'm back.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone.
Good to see you, Buddy.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Debbie County Manager. I'm here today to request the board to open up and conduct our first public hearing on the FY '22 millage rate. Before I begin, though, and ask you to conduct that hearing, I'd like to give a short presentation, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So on June 30th, 2022, the county posted and advertised all required ads for our millage rate. More specifically, and in accordance with OCGA 48-5-32, we posted the five-year history of our digest and it was advertised. We had our advertised for the notice of tax increase, which was also advertised in the NVJ. And also, we had a press release. While not advertised in the paper, it was distributed to all major media outlets in the area and it was also posted on our website. In addition, all, the two ads plus the press release are all on our front page of our cobbcounty.org, so that information can all be found there. And more specifically, within the press release, we not only addressed the general fund millage rate, we also addressed the millage rates for all other funds that have it, such as the fire fund, the debt service fund, the Cumberland Special Service District II, and the Six Flags Special Service District. That was all within the press release. And I want to pivot over to our county attorney, if I may, for a second. Can you please confirm that all of the advertisements were advertised according to OCGA 48-5-32?
Yes, sir, they were.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. So today, we have our first public hearing, which is being held, obviously, right now. We're going to have our second public hearing at 6:30 PM in a special called BOC meeting. That was the meeting we were referring to earlier, on July 19th in this room. We'll have our third and final public hearing on July 26th at our regularly scheduled BOC meeting, and that is at 7 o'clock. Following that third public hearing, the board will consider the adoption of the millage On this next slide, I'd like to highlight the changes, the proposed changes in the millage rate from '22 to '21. The general fund will remain the same, is proposed to remain the same, at 8.46 mils. The fire district fund will have an increase from 2.86 mils to 2.99 mils. That is a .13 mil increase. The debt service fund is going to be reduced to zero, from .13 to zero, which is a .13 mil reduction. I want to note there that the reason we're reducing it, as contemplated when we went out for the parks bond, was that as soon as we collected enough money from property taxes to satisfy the principal and interest on the outstanding debt, we would, as legally required, stop collecting the millage rate. At this point, we have collected enough to satisfy those debts with the last bond payment being made in 2023. So as a result, we are eliminating that millage rate. One other thing to note, citizens that are within an incorporated area that provides fire services, right now, they currently only pay from a county perspective, the county general fund and the county debt service fund, within those incorporated areas with fire districts. So by reducing the debt service to zero, those individuals will actually see a property millage rate reduction from the county. I also want to point out that our Cumberland Special Service District II and our Six Flags Special Service District will remain unchanged in the proposed millage rates. This slide is to give you an idea of how the digest changed. As you can see, the biggest change was in residential real property, which is approximately $4.4 billion of a change in the digest. And if you humor me, I'd just like to go down to the gross digest for a moment. As you can see, that makes up an overwhelming percentage increase of the change in the gross digest, which was 5.4 billion, roughly 12%. I also want you to note that the exemptions grew about $2.5 billion. And on the next slide, we'll get into that. That exemption is mainly that growth was from the growth in the floating homestead. So when you have the gross net, less the exemptions, you get to your net digest, which grew at approximately $2.9 billion or 8%. So to break it down as easy as possible, it's just a simple math equation. You have your digest multiplied by the multiplier, which is the millage rate, equals expected taxes, correct? So when the digest goes up and yet the millage rate remains the same, okay, in turn, that could be viewed as a tax increase. So as a result, we had to publish the notice of property tax increase anytime we're proposing a millage rate that would be above the rollback. But I want to point out something unique, and that's on the right side of the screen. So for a primary residence within Cobb County, I want to use an example here of a home that was valued at $350,000 in 2021. Now, like most homes, it was reassessed in 2022, in this example, to be $400,000. It's a $50,000 increase in the assessed value. I'm sorry, in the fair market value. So 40% of that is the assessed value, and that's a $20,000 change from 140,000 to 160,000. Now, here's the benefit of a homeowner who has a floating homestead of the primary residence. As you'll see, the homestead changed in an amount equal to the change in the assessed value, and therefore, the net taxable value from year to year remained at 130,000. So when you have your A times your B for that primary resident, their general fund tax liability did not change. That's the exemption, that's the benefit of the floating homestead exemption. So with that, I wanted to highlight a few of those changes and highlight the floating homestead exemptions and its benefits. And then I would like to open it up for any comments or questions that you may have before I request open, you to open the public hearing.
I'll start with Commissioner Burl and then Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Buddy.
You're welcome, ma'am.
The homestead exemption is applied to the general fund.
Yes, ma'am.
So the increase, the appraisals on your home that have gone up are applied to the debt service and the fire fund.
As well as the school district. Yes, ma'am.
And that was my next comment.
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to jump in.
Two-thirds of your bill, unless you're 62 and over, is your school tax.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's a separate tax. We collect it for the school system, but they set their millage and...
That is correct, ma'am. Yes, the tax commissioner...
And it is two-thirds of your bill.
That is correct.
Unless you're old, like me.
No, that's not the case.
Seasoned. All right. Commissioner Richardson?
Any other comments or questions?
We called it the veteran commissioner.
I'll take that.
So there have been a question kind of posed around the fire fund increasing at .13 and the debt service being reduced at .13.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a correlation? Is that a direct move or is there an actual increase in the fire fund?
I can tell you that there is a need for a millage rate in the fire fund. Okay, so in 2022, and you have to remember that, we've already adopted the budgets that these millage rates apply to. So when this board contemplated the 2022 budget for the fire fund, that included the step-in grade, that included compression. And for the first time in many, many years, that 2022 budget actually included capital, along with healthcare and pension and everything else. In addition to that, we now have things that we're considering for the 2023 budget, such as the paying class that we're looking at. So we needed to incorporate that .13 mil in the proposed 2022 budget in order to have that budget that allowed the fire fund to have a sustainable capital budget for the first time in many years. So yes, to answer your question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burl. Commissioner Gamble, did you have a question?
So the homestead exemption, that only applies to homeowners, correct?
Homeowners, that's their primary residence.
Correct. And so all of our commercial property owners, which include small businesses, apartment complexes and such, they have to bear the burden of the full increase because they don't get the exemption.
They do not have the floating homestead. No, ma'am.
Right. So in a sense, though, that that does go back and impact the people that do rent because they're going to have to pay that increase for value. And I think we can agree that we're in a hot market, bull's market, right now. So, and it does impact all of us as far as the viability of businesses staying afloat because, again, they don't get the exemption. So the big portion of this 12% digest increase is being borne on our commercial entities, correct?
I can't speak in detail to the percentage allocation of the burden of that, but what I can tell you is also new homeowners who bought their home for the first time are buying at a higher appraised value, and so they would be carrying some of that burden as well. And as you can see from the digest slide, that commercial, I think, was 663 million, if I can go back to my slide here. Yeah, 667 billion was in commercial real property, but 4.4 billion was in residential real. But as I was mentioning earlier, you have to look at the exemption line. So if you net out the $2.5 billion growth in exemption, there was a fair bit of residential real property that is carrying some of this burden, ma'am.
And there's no way to break out what the burden is from...
I could consult with the tax assessor on that, but at this podium, no, ma'am. I couldn't do that for you.
You didn't let me finish my question.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you for the answer, Bud.
Sure.
So is there a way to tell how much of this residential property change is from new sales and not from adjusting home values?
I would have to defer to our tax assessor on that, and I can certainly do that for you if you'd like me to.
Thank you.
And follow up with the board.
Thank you. And I know Steve is here. Steve, I don't know if you would like to respond prior to us going to the next remark, please.
Morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Geraldine, if I understand the question correctly, you're asking for a breakout of commercial to the total digest. Is that one question?
Well, and as Buddy pointed out, we already have that broken out here, but on the residential real property line, the $4.4 billion, you know, part of that is from actual homes being purchased, but then how much of that is homes that values have gone up because of a home next door to them being sold?
Sure. That number can be obtained. We can get a number in regards to how much value in the increase is attributed to just reassessment. I think that's what you're after, correct?
Yes, please.
Sure. We can get that. We can get that for you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Burl?
I just wanted to read some history on the fire fund millage. It was decreased from 3.06 mils in 2015 to 2.96 mils. to 2.96 mils in 2016. Decreased again to 2.86 in 2018, where it is now. And it's proposed at 2.9 for 2022, which is still 0.07 mils lower than it was in 2015. And the debt service millage was scheduled to drop from 0.23 mils in '16 to zero in '17. But that's the year that the Parks Bond was issued and the 2017 General Obligation Parks Bond required a millage rate of 0.13. So instead of originally anticipated rate of zero, it was adopted at 0.13 mils for the debt service, the Parks Bond in '17. And it has stayed at 0.13 since then and until now.
Just for clarification. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any remarks before we open up our public hearing? Okay, with that, our public hearing is now open.
Thank you.
Those wishing to speak may address the millage, and we'll have a total of three minutes to address the board.
Here we go again. I'm going to address the millage.
Just state your name again for the record.
Debbie Fisher, East Cobb, speaking on my own behalf. The millage rate doesn't matter when it comes to the amount of revenue generated. The reason it was reduced was because of the increase year over year over year over year of reappraisals on our property. And there's such a thing as excess funds. And when you get revenue coming in far higher than your operating budget, that's a problem. That's why it was rolled back. And as I look at the revenue and the operating budgets for the fire fund, we have an increase proposed right now of $11 million, yet the digest increased by almost 13%. And there's a millage increase, yet where's that money going? Where's the difference? So talking about millage rate is kind of inconsequential. What's their revenue? What's their requirement to operate? And I want to be clear. I love our public safety people. I'm all about funding them for whatever they need to operate. But what I'm not all for is raising a tax, which you're doing by swapping the Parks Bond, which taxpayers expected to go to zero, to the fire fund, and not showing a need. So Joanne, I respect you trying to explain it. And I'm totally aware, I've been battling the fire fund for quite some time because at one point, they had a huge surplus in revenue that they were sitting on. I believe it was $38 million. Well, I was told back then, they had to use that to build the new fire station. And then what do we do? We go out and get a loan for it instead of paying for it with excess funds. And now we're going to have a millage increase. Please explain that to me. What is the need? Are we building more fire stations, buying more equipment? Just explain the need. You can talk about millage all day, but at the end of the day, it's the revenue that millage generates you should be talking about. Not one of you has said a word about it. So I just want to make it clear to people who are watching and who are in the audience, no, it's not .7 mils less.
Ms. Fisher, sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
My name is Pamela Reardon, I'm in East Cobb, speaking for myself, concerned citizen. So obviously, given my previous comments, then we have a tax increase. And it's on the burden, it's really a burden of when you were talking about splitting out the real estate. It is the industrious, innovative, maybe in the right place at the right time, people who bought extra properties in order to rent them out. These are actually people, not BlackRock. Now, I have another issue, I can talk forever about that. But people who do not have the homestead exemption are going to have to 100% increase in a market that already rents are too high, the rents on the people that they own these properties, that the renters rent out. They 100% are going to have to increase those. So given, and my theory is, the fire fund has always been a slush fund. I mean, over the years, moving funds here, there, bonds, this, that. Let's face it, the fire fund is a slush fund. And I want to know why the analysis of the last two years, three years, great stock market, all the money that we've made in this county, where's that money? And what's going to happen with that? We are so flush in this county, we should not be increasing taxes. It's my comment. Oh, one other thing that probably goes to the other thing about the 3% merit increase. I don't think Drew deserves one because that was a huge mistake that he made, not publicizing the right time on that.
We'll take our next speaker.
Hello again, my name's Craig Harfoot. I was talking about the millage rate needs to be rolled back. And I was on this thread of how these things go. But Georgia Fund One, I'm glad you got somebody up here to tell you about that. Some 15 years ago, I looked into Georgia Fund One. Nobody on the commission knew about it. I had, it was some school board officials finally acknowledged it during our Fourth of July parade. I asked, I just asked every politician I knew if they knew what it was. Nobody. But anyhow, they were invested in multinationals. And it turns out it's the same multinational banks. There was a list of 15. And it was run through the Secretary of the Treasury of Georgia. It's actually one of the top tier, like governor, secretary of state, that little group. They pick among themselves the treasurer. It's Raffensperger now. He'd been it before, somebody else was it, and now he's back in. But anyhow, he's the guy that chooses the investments. The investments are now Treasuries, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and there's some others. But the whole thing gets down to, this is where it gets to looking like a Ponzi scheme. The federal government gives you some money and cares. You park it in Fund One. And then, you know, the banks loan out money, and then they offload it to Fannie and Freddie. And then there's more money, you know, because of fractional banking. Every $100,000, the bank can loan out a million. Well, this is how you blow up the bubble. But never have I seen the state of Georgia in Fund One actually participating in the bubble by using these investment structures. And here's the treasury issuing money, you know, to give to you, to help pay rents for people and all this. And it's going right back into this loop. It's a circle. It's the same printed up money. But the people it hurts most, I mean, my taxes, according to him, they didn't go up at all, but they did go up. They went up about 10%. And I get the senior exemption and all that, but I mean, I've lived in this house for 30 years and I've been there. But anyhow, it's the renters who are going to get killed and the new time homeowners. And some of you up there are among those new time homeowners. And the last one, when they went upside down, I actually knew people that walked away from their houses because they were worth less. They had jobs, they had money, they could have paid, but they didn't. They just walked away, bought something else.
Mr. Harfoot, your time's up.
Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. Before we go on to our next matter, I would like for our Public Safety Director to come up, please, and address some of the remarks with respect to the fire fund.
Good morning, Commissioner, Deputy County Manager. Yes, I, as the fire chief for six years, obviously, for many years, we've had a dedicated fire fund and legally, that money can only be spent on the fire fund. And historically, we have made our major purchases out of fund balance, which is leftover monies that are collected that we don't use in our operating budget. And for quite some time, we went without funding capital in our overall budget. We have an apparatus, and just to give you an example of the need for the extra .13 mils in the fire fund, and it is true, while we were collecting additional funds over the years that created a fund balance, we had a healthy fund balance, and so we lowered the millage on the fire fund. But during that time, we also found ourselves not being able to fund capital. And in the county, in the fire department, we have an apparatus replacement schedule that with the 30 fire stations, that's 30 fire engines, you have your rescue trucks, you have your ladder trucks. And we try to maintain an apparatus replacement schedule of replacing three apparatus a year. We try to get 10 years out of an apparatus in frontline and then three additional years to that apparatus as a reserve apparatus. So when you fall behind on that apparatus replacement schedule at about $875,000 per engine and about $1.8 million for a ladder truck, you can find yourself in a situation to where, how are we going to catch up? And so that is one example of why the millage, whether it was a transfer of a debt service millage or not, the need is there for us to have that millage to increase our revenue in order to get back on schedule with our apparatus replacement schedule. And so that's just an example. And I can assure you that we sit down with the fire chief and with finance and the county manager to dissect that budget to make sure that we are funding what is needed, but not in excess.
Go ahead, Commissioner, please.
Thank you for that clarity as well. The follow-up question I have is the .13, does it make the fire department whole in terms of capital need? Or is it a compromise amount based upon just considering where we are as what our financial situation is?
Does it meet a certain portion of our needs? Yes. Does it meet all of our needs? No. It doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
That is one reason that we had to do our compression solution in a three-year phase, for an example.
Got it, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Burl.
Yes, good morning, Randy.
Good morning.
I know in the past, as was stated, we did have a healthy fire fund and reserves. But recently, I know that we have purchased property out of the fire fund for fire stations, replacement or new or, you know, capital. And they've, one in my district has sat empty, vacant for two years at least because we didn't have the funds in the fire fund to build it.
Sure.
So it's now a sploß project because it's capital and a building going up in the current sploß. But I know, you know, other fire stations in other districts, we didn't have the money to even purchase out of the fire fund. So, and there, you know, others on splosted as well. And also, with the fire fund, the money to address compression and the stepping grade three-year proposal that we started last year, it's in the budget for this year. And next year, it will be two to end compression, is also coming out of the fire fund, which is another expense that, you know, we didn't foresee when we implemented the stepping grade. So I understand how it's needed and it's not just, you know, arbitrarily put in there to spend. It is needed, and I understand that. And I just wanted to, you know, point out some of the things that we haven't been able to do because of the millage being reduced in the fire fund over the years. And I just wanted to make that point, and you're welcome to address that as well.
Sure, we still have two fire stations that were built in the early 1960s that, obviously, we have outgrown those fire stations. One fire station in particular, we have to order a specialized piece of equipment because the engine bay is not big enough to house what today's normal fire apparatus looks like. And so, but we do not currently have those projects funded. So those are just other examples of us delaying projects because of not having the funding.
All right. And then I don't know if you can address this, or maybe Bill. The .13 mils is equivalent to what amount? Buddy or Bill?
Approximately $5 million in the fire fund.
Fire station cost you about $7 million? Fire apparatus, $1.8 for a ladder truck, $850 or so thousand for a fire engine. Like anything else, prices of to operate has gone up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. So with respect to the apparatus, are you guys caught up on your schedule?
We are getting there, yes. If I'm not mistaken, we just put in a purchase for four additional pieces of equipment. Plus, you have to understand, there's a two-year lead time on getting a fire truck when you order it because of production slowdown. So if we order a fire truck today, we're looking at 19 to 24 months before we get it delivered.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any additional questions for Randy or for finance? All right, thank you, Director Carter, and thank you, Buddy, for your presentation. Our public hearing is concluded. We will now go on to our next tab. We are now at the public comment portion of our meeting. Bill, how many speakers do we have?
We have four chairwoman that signed up.
Okay, here it is.
As the board provides the podium for public comments, appropriate to review the related meeting rules regarding public comment, please state your name and if you're speaking on behalf of any organization. All comments should be addressed to the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for the speakers to provide their comments to the board. All comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to be both listened and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And just as a reminder, there is a timer on the podium to keep track of your time. With that being said, the first public speaker is Matt Stegall.
Good morning. My name is Matt Stegall. And as I mentioned, I've lived in this county for more than 30 years. I just want to follow up on my previous comments that I made at the last meeting. And after a quick recap, I'll get to the meat and potatoes of it, which was the recommendations and how we... and how we can reduce our dependency on the car. Quick recap from the previous presentation, we have had a complete streets policy in place since 2009, but the truth about our priorities as a county isn't found in our vision or policy, but it's found in our budget. Our budgets have prioritized the car for its decades at this point, and the results of that have been that we are car-dependent. Over 85% of people who commute either commute, either alone in a car or with others in a car. With that, we still have congestion, even after investing hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars in our roads. And this has also led to a dangerous situation where deaths and injuries for bicyclists and pedestrians have increased over the last few years. The solution isn't to build more lanes, and as I mentioned before, induced demand leads to actually more traffic over time, and Chick-fil-A is always a great example for that, Chick-fil-A drive-throughs. And the solution is that we need to fund more sustainable transportation. And this includes transit, bike lanes, pedestrian infrastructure, and we have an opportunity to take more cars off the road by focusing on both local trips as well as longer commutes. And we've got a few, like, you know, different funding mechanisms, but really, I really want to focus on three recommendations that we can make in the very short term that doesn't require any type of referendums or anything like that. The first one is hiring staff that specializes in sustainable transportation, or Vision Zero is another one that's focused on pedestrian and bicyclist safety. We can also set goals as a county to achieve in both the short term and the long term. That's reducing CO2 emissions, reducing vehicles' miles traveled, and also reducing the injuries and fatalities that are, that we see on the roadways. And finally, we can conduct an integrated growth study that combines both land use and the comp plan with transportation, instead of these being the current siloed processes. The way I look at this is kind of flipping it, and if we're expected to grow by a couple hundred thousand people over the next couple of decades, how do we do it? And I think answering that question and figuring it out in a different way might help us come to some new solutions. So those are my three recommendations as far as short-term things that we can do that aren't, you know, too comprehensive, and yet those would be catalysts to help us move forward as a county for generations to come. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Ms. Owen.
Good morning. My name is Ms. Owen, and I represent the Davis Direction Foundation and the Zone. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for the opportunity to speak before you today. I'm very appreciative for this county's work to combat the ongoing opioid crisis. Although the opioid epidemic has been swallowed up by other crises and pressing issues in this country, it remains immensely important to the county and impacts thousands of lives each year. I'm very thankful that the county attorney, Mr. Rowling, has become a leader in pursuing this litigation that will end up helping this county greatly. And I'm extremely grateful that the Board of Commissioners has shown the foresight to fund proactive programs and allow resources to flow to those who need them the most. Cobb has been impacted pretty much more than any county in the state, ranking first or second in the number of overdose deaths since 2017. So the need is still great, and the cost of the county is tremendous. In 2016, Vic Reynolds, the DA at the time, and I established the Recovery Roundtable Leadership Council. Every DA since then has co-chaired this council along with me to address the ongoing issue of substance use disorder and to collaborate in order to make the most of our resources without duplicating efforts. Our county is second to none in the way that we work together to combat this crisis. Every quarter, we come together to share services, keep up to date with the latest information affecting our community, and welcoming new people to the fold who are in positions to complement our efforts. Case in point, the Opioid Fatality Review Project. However, because of the tremendous amount of fentanyl coming into our community, we have much more work to do. This litigation has drawn on for some time now. Every day that goes by, more lives are lost to preventable overdoses. It's time to put the litigation behind us and begin focusing on the real task at hand, saving lives. In the past three months alone, 30 people went to the ER at Cobb Hospital for fentanyl poisoning. Fifteen of those 30 believed they were taking something other than fentanyl, including Oxy, Roxy, Vicodin, Xanax, heroin, and generic pain pills. This tells me that there are 30 people who are in dire need of our services. This number does not even include, however, those who were treated and refused to be transported, or those who overdosed and were brought back by family members using Narcan, or those who, by the grace of God, survived the overdose. These are just the ones we can count. This money will help boots-on-the-ground organizations like the Davis Direction Foundation at the Zone with proven records of success to continue to provide services, feed people who are food insecure because of their circumstances, provide meetings, host prevention efforts, provide recovery coaching and phone assistance, provide referrals to treatment with one of our many partners, all in an effort to save the lives of those who suffer with the disease of addiction. Last month alone, we had 5,926 visits from people seeking, maintaining, or enjoying long-term recovery in our community. These services cost money, and we work hard to sustain our nonprofit, as do the others who work alongside us in this space. I would encourage you to accept the $3.5 million settlement from Rite Aid, because in my humble opinion, further delay only means that our share of the settlement will continue to get eaten up by lawyer's fees and further delay needed abatement dollars in Cobb County. No amount of money will ever make this right. When you ask a mother to put a price on the life of a child, there will never be enough to cover the cost. However, we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good that can be done with this settlement money right now. Please accept the money and let our community continue to save the lives of those we can. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Mr. Henderson.
Hello. My name is Gary Henderson, and I spoke to you earlier, and I do not represent any other group other than myself. I'd like to finish up briefly what I started earlier, and I figured I wouldn't have enough time for it, that's why I signed up for the public comment period. But almost finished, but also have one thing to add. When I talked about what we can afford, you know, the 48% increase, the $11,000, you know, if you get down to the dollar an hour increase, $2,000 for the, all the pay grades, and making sure that no one falls below the minimum in the pay grade going forward, I think that's probably more sustainable than anything else. And as Pam talked about, if we're not in a recession already, we're right there at the cusp of it. So things are going to come down in terms of wages. And I think that in six months from now, a $12.50 starting wage with the good county benefits and the job security a county job offers is going to look more attractive than perhaps a $15 an hour job with no job security, because you're going to see some increase in unemployment going forward. It's just part of a recession. The other thing I would like to add is that in terms of, the questions came up about the millage and who's bearing what portion of the cost of that. A week after the primary, I got my reassessment on my home. My taxes are going up $150 a year next year. I've been in the house for 22 years. That represents about an 8% increase for me. So I don't know if that's generally across the board, but I know that that's my personal experience in it. So there is an increase, regardless of what was shown up there about your taxes not going up because of your homestead exemption going up. That's not the case. It's certainly not the case for me, and I'm sure it's not the case for a lot of other people. So I just wanted to let you know that there is that situation, that people are seeing a tax increase that have been in their houses for a long period of time. Thank you.
Mr. Harfoot?
Hello again. My name's Craig Harfoot. Again, you should roll back the millage rate. The, I was here when the angry black women from South Cobb County were here talking about being evicted at the beginning of COVID. I realize there's all these programs in place that, you know. The deal is, that circle I talked about, so somebody comes in and buys some houses up in Cobb County, they rent them out. Without homestead exemption, the taxes go up the most on those houses that are rental houses. And there again, you're having government money subsidizing these higher taxes, and it's blowing up everybody at the same time, but actually, you're actually hurting your constituents. And the other thing is, with this energy and food, that Fed doesn't count in inflation. Food stamp allotments don't go up because of cost of living, because the Fed does not count food or energy and cost of living. They just don't. It's how they inflate everything to pay unfunded events like the Iraq War, the Vietnam War, and COVID. Trillions of dollars. So they create these bubbles, and these all started with the South Sea Bubble. Sir Isaac Newton lost his fortune in. 1700s Britain, how you fund an unfunded war? It's all through stock market and manipulations and crash. But the servants of the wealthy people were riding around in courages at that time in the 1700s, thinking they were wealthy because their stocks had gone up. These are all, I mean, 300 years of this? That's what we've had. But we got to do something better. I mean, it's like, you got to be forward-looking. I mean, I watched, when Joe Thompson was in that chair, and people came up that were renting, that owned property in South Cobb, and they were friends of Joe's, and they were, and they were raising the millage rate, and the people came here and pleaded with them, and they said, hey, you've had dinner at our table. And the, they just basically were begging, and he says, our tenants can't afford to pay more rent. And I got to pass through the taxes, and the guy, and Joe says, oh, just raise the rents. Well, there's, in a nutshell, that's the whole problem. You can't spend your way out by printing money, because the littlest people, that's why they get poor, and the rich get richer every time you print trillions of dollars. So thank you.
Chairwoman, that's the final public speaker.
Thank you. Mr. Harfoot, I think I've known you for at least a decade, if not more, from me being involved in local government prior to even running for office, and I know you mean no offense to anyone, and I would just encourage you that when you see angry people to not refer to their race or their gender.
Oh, excuse me, I apologize.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. With that, let's go ahead and take a five-minute, we'll take a break, yes, for about five minutes, and come back and resume our agenda. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting this July 12th of 2022. We are now going into our consent agenda. These items, we're scrolling on the screen to the start of this meeting and following this meeting, you will also see a list of our matters on consent. Commissioners, I believe that there has been some clarification on the sheriff's matter, so we will include agenda item number four on the consent agenda. However, we discussed that the matter pertaining to the opioid litigation, agenda item number fourteen, will be moved to the regular agenda and it will immediately follow consent. With that, commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as revised with the exceptions to items fourteen, which was moved to the regular agenda, and to authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, commissioners. And with that, we'll move again to agenda item fourteen.
Thank you, Chairwoman. In 2018, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners authorized the county to pursue litigation regarding certain manufacturers, distributors, and retailers of opioid pharmaceuticals. That endeavor initiated to hold the defendants, opioid defendants financially responsible for the impact of the opioid epidemic in Cobb County and then also to secure the resources to be able to address that. As Ms. Owen mentioned earlier, Cobb County has led or been near the top of opioid-related overdose deaths for a number of years, not a place where we are proud to be. Our District Attorney's Office, Cobb Law Enforcement, including both our Sheriff's Office as well as our Police Department, have been at the forefront of this fight in our neighborhoods. These claims against opioid defendants, including the manufacturers and distributors, have resulted in several global settlements as part of the multi-district litigation that's based in Ohio after we initially filed here in Georgia. However, the claims against the pharmacy retail chains have had to move to a trial stage in order to see what the next step was regarding the retailers regarding settlement. As part of the MDL, Cobb County was selected as one of the five bellwethers for the trial to actually be held across the United States. Those other locales included both three of the, two of the other ones we're mentioning here today, which is Durham, North Carolina, as well as Montgomery County in Ohio. Rite Aid is a defendant in those three lawsuits, those bellwethers that are getting ready to be tried beginning in 2023. Cobb County's case was selected as part of those bellwethers after prolonged negotiations between local government plaintiffs, including Cobb County, and Rite Aid. A settlement has been reached that would resolve three of those bellwether claims as to Rite Aid. Legal counsel and the parties have negotiated various documents necessary to effectuate the bellwether settlements as to Rite Aid, including allocation of the settlement proceeds amongst those local government entities, with all three of them receiving the same amounts. The framework for the negotiations of the settlement terms were presented to the board at executive session in October of 2021. The county manager has established a standing committee that is working internally regarding the best use of and distribution of these funds as they are collected. Settlement funds will be received in place in a segregated bank account designated for those funds to be used for reimbursement of opioid-related expenditures and funding the opioid abatement measures. And of course, those expenditures will come back before the board, before they would actually be spent. Therefore, I ask the Board of Commissioners authorize Cobb County to join the other local governments, those other three bellwether plaintiffs, to settle the claims related to Rite Aid. Authorize the Finance Department to accept receipt of the settlement proceeds and then allow the county attorney, myself, to execute all necessary settlement documents.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate your work and the work of many others here in the county with respect to addressing this. That, commissioners, I move that we approve this agenda item as presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Burrow?
Um, Bill, what are the requirements for distribution of this money to nonprofits or how, where it's going? And will that come back to us?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And that's part of that internal committee that the county manager has set up for us to look at how to best to abate and address these issues. And they would come back to you on ideas on how to spend those. Some of those are actually going to be made to make Cobb County whole regarding the services it's providing as well. And then be able to look at also in the community, how we would best be able to impact it.
Okay. And I would just like to say thank you to Missy and Mike for being here today and for your support. I know that wasn't easy to get up and speak, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other remarks? Commissioner Gamble?
And before I make my vote, this has nothing to do with, Missy, what your organization does, but it's my opinion that this lawsuit is still not addressing the root cause that the nation is facing. Therefore, I cannot support it.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries four one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. We are now moving on to transportation.
Good morning again. Drew Wrestler, DOT.
Hi, Drew.
DOT has ten items for the board's consideration this morning. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of mitigation credits in an amount not to exceed $230,600 for stream and wetland impacts associated with Chattahoochee River Trail pedestrian improvements, Phase One, project number X2780, and authorize the corresponding budget transaction.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes four one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Surface Transportation Block Grant Program application to the Federal Transit Administration in an amount not to exceed $14,375,000 for Transit Americans with Disabilities Act sidewalk improvements, project number B2750, authorize the acceptance of awarded Surface Transportation Block Grant Program funding, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman or her designated to execute the necessary documents.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC as savings to the project in the amount of $20,431.30 for roadway improvements on Cherokee Street, project number X2603, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises Incorporated, savings to the project in the amount of $70,699.33 for drainage system repairs on Shelley Court, project number D2834, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. On this next item, I'll note that you do have a revised agenda item. The numbering is off just based on some of the other moves in the agenda.
Thank you.
That modifies some of the water funding line items. This item recommends the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated, savings to the project in the amount of $29,431 for drainage system repairs on Morrison Trace, project number D2861, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the project number D2863 to the 2021 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Gracy Gray Contractors Incorporated, a net savings to the project in the amount of $2,860.82 for drainage system repairs on Willa Ridge Drive, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with the Department Sports Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $226,834 for drainage system repairs on Scott Road, project number D2844, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $343,963 for drainage system repairs on Mountain Creek Drive, project number D2857, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated in amount not to exceed $216,742.75 for drainage system repairs on Lake Latimer Drive, project number X2286, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize advertisement for in conduct of a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to perform engineering design services for various projects in the 2022 Slos Transportation Improvements Program, and further authorize the issuance of requests for qualifications, requests for proposals or task orders to secure required services as shown on the attached list of upcoming projects for 2022.
All right. So moved as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Comment?
I just want to say how excited the public is for these projects finally coming to fruition and appreciate all your assistance and your team for making this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good. All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
I believe that takes us to our second public comment. And we have no speakers, which means we are now at our commissioner's public address. We'll get things queued up and start with Commissioner Gamble.
So for seniors fifty-five and over, join the crafting corner at North Cobb Senior Center for painting on glass. You can explore your inner Picasso and create your own unique designs while getting hands-on experience and guidance from presenter Evelyn Patrick. The first class has started today and also will be continued tomorrow from 10:00 to 12:30. And we have a second class that'll take place on July 19th and 20th from 10:00 to 12:30 as well. Registration is required and you can call 770-975-7740 to do so. Congratulations to these young men shown here with volunteer mentor Daniel, who completed their bits, which is Boys and Technology and Science, series of programs. They learned about computers, 3D printing, and navigating a robot through a maze using Arduino coding. We are proud of what you all accomplished and we can't wait to see how you utilize all these new skills. Summer's proved to be the worst season for vehicle theft, which is why July is proclaimed as National Vehicle Theft Prevention Month. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, more than 800,000 vehicles were stolen in the United States in 2020. Be diligent about securing your car, take preventative measures to keep your car safe, and follow these tips on the slide. And lastly, you can learn to sew a drawstring bag in a two-hour machine sewing course. Materials and expertise will be provided. If providing your own fabric, please be sure it's 100% cotton. You can register or use our QR code at North Cobb Regional Library. It's for ages 12 and up, and of course, adult learners are welcomed. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Richardson?
Sure thing. So, from the office, on Friday, we went out on a tour of District Two with the Keep Cobb Beautiful team to see and document instances of litter on our GIS app. Our records will be a part of KCB's yearly litter index. Thank you to KCB member Dawn Smith for serving as our tour guide and Sharif Khan from DOT for serving as our driver. Thank you to Arjo, my sustainability chair, Myron Massey, my KCB appointee, for joining, and certainly Aaliyah's in there as well, and big, big props to Kim for continuing to move the needle with KCB. PJ Workshop. So this is the Environmental Justice Agreement that we've been on the pathway for, for some time now, over the past year. We've been working with members of our community to identify opportunities for improvement in sustainability and environmentalism. And this is the voice of the community, where there are opportunities for green tech. I'm with the goal of creating the Environmental Justice Agreement, or draft agreement, for Cobb County. Now is your chance to get involved by joining the workshop and view all the things that you've discussed over the year. And that will be shared with my fellow commissioners up here and staff, as staff has been a part of some of these calls as well, and just help to coalesce what direction we want to go as a community. So you can register using the QR code or going to D2Cobb.com/events, and hopefully you'll join us at Suleman Library at 6:30 on the 28th. We'll also have a digital platform for you to put in some more ideas and recommendations. Community update. Library, that 70s program. Where were you in '72? The beat is back, baby, as we take a stroll down memory lane to celebrate 1972. It's the 50th anniversary of Watergate, pocket calculators, stove top stuffing, Fortran, MRI machines, and Pong. During this 1972 pop culture happy hour, we will discuss these social phenomena, plus the popular movies, music, television, and bestselling books of that year. Vintage era clothing is encouraged, but not required. So, put on those platform shoes and head on down. Make sure to register using the QR code or visiting the Cobb Library website. Last thing, register for Cobb Parks Softball League. Cobb Parks Falls Adult Softball League is now open. Individual registration closes July 13th. Team registration closes July 20th. $320 for team registration, $50 for individual registration. All teams are guaranteed eight games, which may include playoffs. Games are scheduled to start the week of August 1st. To view the leagues offered, click the packet in the QR code. Games will take place at Terrell Mill Park, Kenworth Park, and the Al Bishop Softball Complex. To register using the QR code, use the QR code or visit the Cobb County website. That concludes my public comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you.
Well, last Thursday was a very exciting and memorable day in Cobb. The Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation, Board of Directors, in partnership with the county, and thank you to Cobb Parks as well, hosted the Cobb Veterans Memorial groundbreaking on Thursday, July 7th, following many years of planning and fundraising. The memorial park will be located adjacent to the Cobb Civic Center at 502 Fair Ground Street. The park plans feature a 142-foot star tower monument, honor walls listing the names of veterans from each of the country's military branches. And it will also have a plaza for events, two reflection pools, and a service hub providing information to veterans and their families. Construction is expected to be completed in 2024. You can get more information or donate to CobbVeteransMemorial.com. And save the date, cause beer and barbecue. A fundraiser for the Cobb Veterans Memorial on Sunday, June 26th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Dry County Brewing. I'm sorry, that's an old one. Concert and cocktails Friday, August 9th, 5:00 to 9:00 at Cowan Historic Hall in Acworth. It is a free event for veterans, $10 for non-veterans, and proceeds will help build the Veterans Memorial Park. There are also sponsorships available. Again, the website is CobbVeteransMemorial.com. Fishing rodeos have begun.
Yay.
District Two's was last Saturday. Lost Mountains is this Saturday, and Ebenezer Downs Park in District Three will be held on July 23rd. So bring out your fishing gear, be sure to register, and the event is open to all children ages three to 16 years old, and it's only a $5 entry fee per child. It's a great event, and probably will be hot, but it's worth it. Next, on July 18th, which is a week from today, Monday, from 10:00 to 3:00, you can visit the Cobb County Animal Services to meet your new forever friend. Adoptions for featured pets are free, no appointment necessary. For more information, you can go to CobbCounty.org/pets. Cobb County Police precincts are collecting book bags and supplies for the Book Bag Palooza. You can drop off at any of the file You can draw, drop off at any of the five precincts or headquarters at Fair Ground, and then Kids Care will be collecting as well, and the Civic Center at 548 Marietta Parkway. And then there's a drive-by and drop-off on Saturday, July 30th, from 11 to 7:00 at the Civic Center. We had two superior pets for patriotic vets adoptions this week. Mr. Stewart adopted this beautiful gray and white tabby cat, and we're grateful for, to Mr. Stewart for his three years of service in the Army. And Mr. Canada adopted this cute little Chihuahua over the weekend, and we're grateful to him for his seven years of service in the Marines. With these two adoptions, our total is now 221. And the contact information from me and my assistant.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sheffield?
100 Black Men of North Metro Atlanta Inc. presents Dads at a Distance, engaging fathers and father figures in the lives of children. The 30th anniversary event will be held on July 16th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the J T Anderson Boys and Girls Club located at 529 Manget Street, Southeast Marietta. The workshop will consist of a panel discussion, kickball game, barbecue, and a school supply giveaway. For more information, contact author.von@northmetro100.org. Hope Family Resource Center is sponsoring an ice cream social on July 23rd from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at 6108 Mableton Parkway in Mableton. In addition to their cool tasty treats, children will, will receive book bags and school supplies. To request an application, please email hopefamily, the number two, at gmail dot com. The City of Powder Springs challenges you to get outside and move to the music at their Sounds of the Springs concert series. Bring your lawn chairs and enjoy the music, your favorite food, and high energy to dance to the band. The Tony, the Tony Howard Show Band will perform on July 23rd at 7:00 PM at the Hardy Family Automotive Amphitheater in Thurmond Springs Park located at 4485 Pine View Drive in Powder Springs. All concerts are free and open to the public, no pets allowed. Seating is on a first come, first served basis. Our monthly in-the-zone meeting will be held on July 27th at 7:00 PM. I will discuss July and August zoning cases. Our in-the-zone monthly community meetings are a great way to learn firsthand about zoning applications and potential development in your community. Please email didra.watts@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. Hope to see you there. And finally, mark your calendar for our annual career fair and tenant forum. Join me, Cobb Works, and Goodwill as we partner with Amazon, the Atlanta Braves, the Marriott UPS, Wellstar Health Systems, and many other, others for employment opportunities. Chief Magistrate Judge Brendan Murphy and his team will discuss tenants' rights. The Marietta Housing Authority and nonprofit agencies will be on-site to answer tenant-related questions. The event will be held on July 30th from 10:00 AM to 1:30 PM at the Cobb County Public Safety Police Training Academy located at 2435 East West Connector in Austell. Employees will conduct onsite interviews, so please be prepared with your resume and interview attire. Thank you.
I want to encourage those who have not attended any of the town hall meetings I've had about how Cobb moves forward together to please consider attending one of our final two meetings across the county. We'll have one tonight at the South Cobb Community Center, and that's located off of Lyons Club Drive. And for those who cannot attend, we will also have information available online for feedback. Before I conclude, I wanted to provide an update that was shared with me just yesterday from public health. And as you may be aware, Cobb County has returned to high COVID-19 transmission levels based on current CDC guidelines. This reflects a seven-day case rate to over 213 cases out of 100,000 residents, and over 200 is now considered a high category. We also have an increase in the new confirmed COVID-19 hospital admission rate of 13.2 out of 100,000, and anything over 10 is considered to be a high category. We also have an increase in the percent of staffed and patient beds in use by confirmed COVID-19 patients to 7.7%. Less than 10 is considered a medium category. As a result, these are recommendations, and there has been nothing mandated, at least by Cobb County Government, even though there is a mandate that's currently within our courts. We encourage you to stay current and recommend, with recommended COVID-19 vaccines and boosters. They are free with our public health department and at many other locations, including local drugstores and CDPH or Cobb Douglas Public Health Outreach Events. You're also encouraged to wear a mask when you're indoors or on public transportation and to, again, maintain your distance and wash your hands to avoid poorly ventilated spaces and large indoor crowds. If you have the opportunity to have virtual meetings, as Commissioner Sheffield stated her, in-the-zone meetings are virtual, those are also encouraged, and it just follows CDC recommendations, and those are listed online. If you have any more questions, you may feel free to visit our Cobb Douglas Public Health site and just want to do the best that we can for everyone to remain healthy at this time. With that, this concludes our meeting and hope that all of you have a great rest of your day and week.